Good evening, welcome to Corey Valley Unified Union School Board District Board Meeting on April tenth, two thousand and twenty-five. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First, I'd like to stand up and say the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a few things to move and add to the agenda. So I would like to move Finance to after General Public Comment. Louis is with us online, it would be just easier to get that out of the way for him. And also, I have a letter from the Booster Club that will be read, Pontley High School Booster Club, that will be read under New Business. So we will do, we will do New Business right after Finance. Are there any other additions or deletions?
Where are, is the Articles of Agreement that we had decided on for April? To just start talking about them.
They're not here, so we, it'd be good to prepare for them.
We were supposed to be prepared for today.
Okay.
At least the first page.
Do you, do we have a copy of them?
I brought it, I can make a copy of the first page for everybody.
Okay.
So.
Alright, we can add that under New Business.
And the other thing was, and I think probably Louis will do it, is we asked about, I asked about the funding, federal funding that we were expecting but may not be getting.
So Linda, I replied to your email and I said I would cover that in the superintendent's report.
Thank you. I didn't, I'm sorry, didn't go back in. Thank you, Chris. Okay.
Okay, so do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Motion's been made. All in favor, say.
Aye.
Any abstentions or any, any other changes? Moving on. To General Public Comment. Does anybody have any general public comments to make?
We, we are.
Could you just stand up and introduce yourself?
My, my, we put, five kids, through what's all, this one's recorder, just got them. They're gonna be able to talk or answer questions or set the record straight or whatever about the problem we had with PWA when they came here.
Mm-hmm.
There was some stuff that was said, and I think the judgment were made based on what information he gave, that wasn't true. And so like us, I don't know how we can about doing that. I hope that by us being here, however long it's been, since then, that you would think that I'm, we're just not here because we got nothing better to do, or to propagate drama just because we got nothing better to do, and that's not the case at all. We have mature kids, and we, as parents, we tend to be mature and not too level-headed and everything, so I don't know how we, how we go about that. If you have questions for me, or what happened.
What, what part would you like to set the record straight on?
Well, we were sent the minutes, the unofficial minutes.
Okay.
And just reading through them was totally not what transpired at the event. I know you guys looked at a video of what happened or whatever, but I don't know if you saw, at the beginning of the video, I had my back to Pete and Jesse, and I saw Jesse go over to Pete and say, now that your daughter scored her points, are you gonna keep your mouth shut? Because he kept making comments in the stands about Jesse's daughter Cameron. And, and then he got angry and said, you wanna effing take this outside, and I can say whatever I effing want. And then in the video, you can see my daughter has baby in her hands, goes over, gets her dad, and was like, that, you gotta get over there, because Pete started shoving Jesse backwards. So he went over and actually de-escalated the what happened, and he calmed down and talked through it, and were able to shake hands at the end. Jesse did not, but Pete and Michael did. But I have a text message that I can show you all from Carl, who was the coach of the West Darlington basketball team. And the incident happened February eighth, and Carl sent a message to Michael on Monday, February tenth, and it said, did you have a conversation with Pete? I just saw on the video, and it looked like Jesse was pissed. And you stepped, stepped in, and I believe, I know what he was pissed over, a couple of things we heard Pete and his crew say. Are the girls okay? Or did they even know what happened? And then Michael responded, he said, yes, I did. Cameron and Haley are fine. He's been running his mouth up there unchecked all season again, and Jesse finally had enough, and I got involved because he was pushing Jesse around. If you wanna see a copy, I can.
I'll, I'll just take.
And we're, again, we're like, I feel like we're tattling, which is what we tell our kids not to do, but we're not, we're not tattling. Like, this is the worst set of parents we ever had, which is, and I told them that myself last year. So anything that is said here, I've said to them, Harrington, Siker, and Pete himself, and his other friends, so I'm not running around trying to get somebody else to, to do something that's not the case. I present almost being here, but if Pete can come with everybody, know what was said, and portray it, we're not wrong, and that makes us the aggressors. And I almost answered that. That was, I was, I actually just de-escalated the situation, chilled everything out. Harrington had plenty of time to get involved and chose to not do, I don't know why. Harrington might have been at the meeting where Pete was talking, Harrington had talked to me, like, I don't know why I might have talked to Harrington if, if there wasn't a rebuttal, but anything that Pete said with what I had already told Pete about. So that, that part I don't understand. And I don't understand how you guys can make a judgment based on one side of conversation without checking in on it. Like, I don't, I don't understand that. So, so I'm here for, to answer any questions, pass a question to answer, and then probably you're probably gonna lie, that we're not, we're not here to, like, this is a death button, but would you like to let us know?
Okay. Does any of the board have any questions for?
So when Pete was talking to Jesse, it wasn't, nobody, we don't do this here, there's kids, and?
That's why my daughter came and got me, because he had his hands, and he's pushing it backwards. And Morgan knew that, Morgan knew that's what was happening to happen, so.
Where's, where's Joe?
He's at a game right now, against Pontley, actually.
Anybody else?
And this has been going on a while?
My wife has me coming into games and sitting with the opposing team so that I keep my mouth shut every just, because that's all we want to do, we just wanna go watch an enjoyable game, that's all I wanna do. And, and it's not the case. So we're sitting further away, and he's getting closer to the middle, so we're, if you look at the videos, we're halfway down the other fan's side, just to stay away, to be mature, to be, you know, everything that a kid is supposed to be. And he, but when he was swearing and made his hands on Jesse, it was like, that was the last great, like, he, he used it all, I was hoping to speak four years out, it just didn't, like, we get, it's gone, so, so here we are.
Okay.
And I don't think it's fair for parents to sit there and have to listen to somebody insulting their children. And we just wanna watch a game. You shouldn't have to listen to somebody if you grade your children. That's not what we were there for. We have to listen to the speech from the VPA. Why are we even saying it if we're not adhering to it?
Okay.
How long have you guys sent kids to West Darlington? Roughly, you think?
Uh, yeah, uh, two thousand and eight.
No issues with ratios ever?
Oh, oh, you're asking me, I'm like, they are the ratios. Cause I don't have any issues with them. Say that question again, sorry, you threw me for a loop.
No problems like with other parents over the last whatever?
We certainly had some issues this year. We definitely did.
With these guys, since you've been principal?
With, with the ratios?
Yeah.
No.
I'm good. How about, how about Pete?
Well, I mean, I don't wanna be a jury, but.
No, no, I, I get it, I'm just.
I've had to speak to a number of parents.
Yeah.
And in fact, the last game, I went into the stands, cause I didn't know what else to do, was to go into the stands and sit there.
That was a terrible game.
Best game?
And I did tell Joe, we need, and we've talked to Chris, that we need to do something cause that's not sustainable. I mean, if I have to, I'm gonna do it, and it was, thank you. I, I mean, I had to do something to go, so I sat in the stands, right in the back row, and everybody knew I was there, so I did what I thought was needed to be done.
Put Joe up in the stands.
Might be one of the possibilities, we, we definitely have talked about it.
I mean, there's, there's plenty of history with that, I mean, he, he went across the court and pounded the, Pete went across the court and pounded his hand on the score table because he didn't like how the subs were playing that thing, this was like years ago, four years ago, and I think that, yeah, maybe I edited it out of the YouTube, when schools run social YouTube, but I don't think it's there, but it happened. And I helped around, not to get involved, but to help Carl, when he addressed Carl, and I helped around just to make sure our students in school, and everything seemed to be better, cause they left, but, so, we don't think in any way that the kids, they are for ours, so we don't get involved at all, we have his children, or whatever, you know, we have no problem with that whatsoever. She's great by her, obviously, and, but, in this game, I think, in this character formation, what happens, cause I don't get involved unless I have to, not in the end. So we got six children, we got a lot of boys.
And that Cameron, she's, comes here voluntarily, right? Isn't she a transfer, or?
Yeah, she's a school choice child.
And your kids are too, correct?
Okay. Thank you, appreciate you coming.
Yeah, how does the, uh, when he gets to grieve, then you just, you just go on that?
Say it again, I'm not understanding the question.
It sounded like he got to grieve the process.
I believe he, he asked to, to speak to the, to the board, if I remember right, it's been a while.
It's called due, due process, he's entitled to due process rights, where before the board could impose any sort of disciplinary action, he had the opportunity to defend himself as due process, so that was, what that was, was due process for him, so.
Complete, or just partial?
He was entitled to due process rights.
So, so how do you check what he said?
So Mike, you need to talk to the board, I've just explained to you what he was doing there, so that's, I just was explaining to you that why he was there is part of due process, so the board can answer those questions for you.
Is there something in the minutes, that you said something about in the minutes?
Yeah, what, um.
So you didn't know that it was?
It said, Mr. Guey advised that he was approached by someone he did not know, later identified as Mr. Williams. Well, our children, we go to a D4 school, Cameron has been there since ninth grade, and she's played free sports, so has P's daughter. You may not know their name, but you know who the person is. You know, you know, you have senior night, the parents go out with the child, you know who the parents are, so, at the game. And then, Mr. Guey's response was that this was not the time and place to talk about any of, all right, I don't have my glasses, any of that, and that he would be happy to go somewhere else and talk. That's not what I heard. I heard very explicit, and we're taking it outside. And then he's, um.
But you understand there was no audio in the video we saw, correct?
Right, we didn't, we couldn't hear anything.
Right, but that, but, didn't he not question what he said?
And he did put his hands on Jesse, correct?
Yeah.
I mean, we had the principal, the A.D., who did an investigation.
Did he, did he say anything against, anything Pete said?
I don't know what that means.
If Harrington was there, I talked to Harrington, if he was talking, Harrington knew what I told him, did he inherit the same?
He shared with us that he had, had.
Interviewed a number of people.
About the issue.
If he, if he drew up anything that?
I don't know if Mr. Harrington was there actually when Mr. Guey was speaking, because he came later, because something was going on that night, and Mr. Harrington wasn't at, wasn't there the entire time.
You missed the first part, and I'm not sure why.
Yeah. Yes, the logic, yes. So I don't believe he was there when Mr. Guey first spoke.
So still, thanks, the question that, how do you come to a verdict when it's asked by?
So, and here it says, Joe spoke with three people involved who provided their understanding of the incident. So he, Mr. Harrington had Michael and Jesse come in on different occasions and interview them on what they said, and then Pete, we're just curious why, if he had him come in to talk about what happened, and he had Jesse come in to talk what happened, why did he not share that with the board?
I don't know, I asked him about the report, I can't, can't answer for him.
We're just, I, so it's more our character that we're concerned about, because this, I mean, he sounds like an outstanding guy after reading, reading this, and that's, that's just not what happened, and that makes it sound like we were the aggressors. I mean, the whole year, we, I, we're sitting on the opposite side, cause I don't want any problems, cause I know he's not gonna photo with somebody tearing down some people's children.
Mm-hmm.
We're just, you know, and we're just tired of it.
Okay.
In the past, when you've had issues with him, and you've gone to Harrington or Mr. Slinker, had, how had that been handled?
I talked to the director.
Directly?
Pete, director.
Pete directly.
And, uh, we had the same thing last year, and I hope that, that would be enough, but.
Cause we went to Hartford, and they were acting up in the stands, and the referee stopped the game, said that we were all gonna be thrown out, and it didn't stop, so, and we came with his parents, we got up, we went and sat on the other side, we were like, we traveled all this way to watch our daughter's play, we're not getting thrown out for not being a part of this.
No, say again, we're not here because he was pushing Jesse backwards, sorry, because he didn't like what Jesse said, what Jesse said he didn't, he said, we're here because it is quite a long history, we're tired of it. And, and I think that was a good step towards it, it was a problem, we were being in the stands, but I, I can't take misrepresentation too much. Now, figuring out how you got there, whatever your decision was, and then speaking at peace. And I realize that, now, this process is probably gonna be it, but, but, it's serious enough that we're still pursuing it, how long do they? Well, it's a long time, so, so we're not, we're not being wrapped.
Yeah, I, I personally, I didn't leave the meeting thinking that there was anything negative, derogatory, or about you or your wife, so.
I was a little surprised that my name wasn't in the minutes at all, because Pete was there, and after a short period of time, I had all talked, like Jesse did. Jesse only started the conversation, only talked a little bit, and I got involved, and I talked the rest of the time.
But you understand, in the video, we're seeing it from one side.
Yeah.
You can't see who's talking, there is no audio, so all of those kinds of pieces, I don't know, kind of get.
I, I understand that, I'm just asking how, how you can draw conclusions through the whole time, or cut it off.
Alright, well, the minutes will reflect your side, as they have reflected his side last month, so that you are being heard.
Okay. Harrington knows the difference, so whether you choose to say or not, I don't know how all that works, but.
And Carl, he, you know, he reached out because he heard comments and stuff, he has it there on the paper.
Okay. Take a closer look at that. Yeah, of course. I think we're all set. Thank you for coming.
I just wanna reiterate to the ratios, cause they have been very polite and, and pleasant and forward to deal with, that we are looking for a long-term solution, because this is not sustainable. You know, the, the, with success comes a lot of negatives, and sometimes I, I just, as they've said, we'd like the kids, or the adults to be able to come and watch the kids, they're children, playing a game, and sometimes people, we need to continue to focus on that.
And we appreciate, yeah, for the last game or two of those, right? Those are the best games of the year.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Hey.
Hey, it's important stuff.
I hope.
Well.
Ambo. There you go.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Alright, no other general comments or public comments? We're good? Okay. So, we're gonna move on to Finance. Louis?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Hello.
So in the package was forecasts, that's what I'm showing as an anticipated year-end balance. A forecast shows currently a surplus of four hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, and the report outlines the, the key areas that will lead into that. One of the big key areas is definitely staffing, and that's due to on-field positions and savings due to ESAR funds. That's making up approximately half of the surplus. And then, some of the other things are tech savings, and, and that's mostly due to ESAR as well. We were able to fund a lot of our technology purchases this year and, and in previous years through ESAR, which was allowing local savings. Transportation, our revenue was greater than anticipated, which is reducing our expense, and, and the remainder is just all the other areas that are on spend. Now, we do have approximately two and a half, three months left in the year, so that hundred and ten thousand in that last category will be reduced some, that only takes into account existing POs, but any new expenditures pronounced for the rest of the year will reduce that slightly. This is, I think, good news, and as, as you recall, during the budgeting season, we talked about, in the FY twenty-six budget, we used approximately one million dollars in one-time revenues between the Corey Valley surplus and the SU surplus, and, and then going into FY twenty-seven budget, we would be, without any surplus for this year, we'd be starting the process, one million dollars in the negative. So this, this surplus will go to offset that, so whatever, whatever we end the year with this year, plus whatever the SU passes through to a refund, will offset that one million dollars in, in one-time revenue that we use for the FY twenty-six budget.
Okay.
My recommendation would be that we, we try to limit our spending for the rest of the year, and only purchase a, a needed item, plus not just to try to go spend any of this, because it, it will make our budgeting process for FY twenty-seven a lot easier if we do have a larger surplus that we can kind of use to offset that, that revenue that we use in prior year.
What are you calling needed stuff? Needed things?
Um, I mean, so, I mean, the, the school year is almost done, so I mean, we should have most of our supplies needed, but if there is something like the office needs paper, or they, they need something special for instruction, but we shouldn't be just buying, just going and buying forty thousand in technology equipment just because we have the money there. If, if it's not something that, that is needed for the rest of this school year, we, we should put it off to the next school year's budget.
Thank you.
And that's just, that's just my recommendation, but anything we spend now that reduces this surplus will just be that much more, we are in the negative when we look at FY twenty-seven budget, and we need to lower all that deficit or, or cut spending.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So at one point, when we were in positions like this, if instructors hadn't purchased certain materials or books at this point of the year, the budget was froze. Is that something we're considering doing, or we're still just leaving it at the will of instructors?
So I'm not asking for a full freeze, I mean, we do freeze the PO process at the end of April, and that's just part of the normal process. I'm, I'm not asking for a full freeze, but that's definitely something the board could decide, decide if they wanted to. I have, typically, if we're running a deficit, or close to a deficit, then I would recommend a full freeze, but that's not, that's not the case at this time, and, and so that's not my recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Louis? Okay. Moving on to New Business. We have a parent request, F twenty-one admission of a resident student. Chris, could you give us?
We actually have two requests, there are two Proctor Elementary students who, as our policy states, that if a student moves prior to spring break, and would like to have their child stay in school, it has to come before the board, anything after spring break, excuse me, is up to my, my discretion. I would recommend to the board that we would allow these two students just to finish the year off at Proctor Elementary, and then next year they would be in their, their home schools.
Okay. Do I have a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
Any, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? It approves. Okay, now moving on to the Booster Club letter.
I just happen to have that.
Okay.
Dated April third, two thousand and twenty-five, to the board regarding the Booster Club gate fees. Dear members, we have learned that our most recent meeting of the Pontley Booster Club, that from this point forward, any monies collected at the gate, admissions, et cetera, from the varsity athletic games, will be the property of the district's general fund. As a result of this decision, we, the Pontley Booster Club, will no longer be responsible for collecting any money for admissions at any varsity sporting events, specifically football and basketball. We feel this is an unfortunate business decision on the part of the district. In the long term for us, this will affect how we try to support our students and student athletes. We have made some significant monetary contributions to our students, athletes or not, their teams and their events, such as equipment, conferences, and field trips. The lack of these additional funds from the gate will result in a cutback of our monetary support, if not a stoppage altogether. We foresee having to be more selective of our choices of what we contribute to. We are open to any feedback or to discuss this matter further. Our next meeting will be on Wednesday, May seventh, seven P.M. in the cafeteria at Pontley High School. And it's signed by Dan Williams President, Robin Williams Vice, Dale Hughes Recording Secretary, and Jen DePart, Treasurer. Copies to Joe and to Mark. And I can share that, the discussion being that if we lose this money, Booster Club's gonna step back, because you just cannot believe the money that this group earns and gives to the Spanish club, to sports, to the drama club, you name it, they give it, not only to the school, but also to the, to the town. So the discussion. So the discussion basically came down to, we're not doing the work. If we don't keep our gate fees, we're not doing the work. We'll just say, come on in. Come on in for nothing. So.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
Is that a big deal to change yet? Not have it going to general budget?
That was, I guess Louis's decision.
I will state that this, real quick Louis, so this has been a policy or procedure that's been in place for at least the past seven years. That Proctor, West Rutland and Pultenley were expected to, gate receipts were to go into the general fund. And I know that Louis has had a few conversations with Joe and Dave Cappan about this, as well as Mark about this as well. But you know, Jay and Jen can both attest that multiple communications have gone out from Louis over the years about this. And you know, all schools are expected to abide by that. Whether or not it's the right thing to do or not. But that was the procedure that all schools, I remember when I was principal seven years ago, we were doing this. That, you know, the gate receipt was going back to the general fund.
So I have, have an idea and a.
I just wanted just to clarify that this was something that, there's a procedure that's been in place for seven years, whether it's, whether you write or not, I'm not disputing that conversation.
No, I understand.
Just saying that that's, Proctor and West Rutland have been abiding by that for seven years as well.
Was that part of it beforehand too?
Louis would have to ask that. I could only tell when it came in.
Before we became together, was that something that you did beforehand as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Because those gate funds? Yes, we did.
I've been a business manager for 17 years and those have always gone to the general fund.
Yes, that's what I said.
Yeah, I didn't say no. I said yes.
I just changed when the business manager.
The point I'll just, the first time that I ever heard that the gate receipts were going to the Booster Club. That I know the 50/50, the Booster Club's always done that. They have gotten those funds that I believe may be the track that go. But the gate receipts have always have gone and are supposed to have gone to the gate, to the general fund. Whether they were skimming pieces of that off and I didn't know about it, that could have been happening, but the process has always been the same.
Skimming's a strong word. But um, I have a, I have a motion I'd like to put forward because we got a lot to go over tonight. So, so my motion is regarding the accountancy of student event proceeds. And all proceeds, this is the motion, all proceeds from student events shall be placed in a Student Activity Fund, SAF, according to each individual Corey Valley Unified Union School District campus. The distribution of these proceeds from the SAF must be approved by a favorable majority vote from the Corey Valley Unified Union School District Board. If the Corey Valley Unified Union School District Board approves the consideration, the superintendent shall instruct the business manager to distribute funds directly to the vendor where services or goods are being purchased. And I added a couple clauses to the motion, the transparency clause. The Corey Valley Unified Union School District Board shall ensure that all transactions and distributions from the SAF are documented and made publicly available to maintain transparency and accountability. Transparency reports shall be published on a quarterly basis. Auditing clause, the Student Activity Fund, SAF, shall be subject to an annual audit by an independent auditor to ensure proper management and accountability of funds. And I would like any discussion on this motion.
A question. Pultenley's the only one that has football. So and Proctor and West Rutland don't.
So the monies, the ticket sales for each school would be divided between each campus?
Even if they don't have that?
So, so, so West Rutlands would be West Rutlands' ticket sales?
Okay.
Proctors would be Proctors and Pultenleys would be Pultenleys. And, and you're using each of these funds for student activities for that campus?
Each school has their own pot.
Exactly.
So Louis, just as a point of clarification, are these funds used for umpires, referees, those kinds of things?
So currently the gate receipts go into the budget as a revenue?
Right.
To offset expenses, so that the district pays all of the expenses associated with our sports, the spike bins, the umpires, the supplies. So the revenue is just offsetting a portion of that. So if they go to student activities, there would just be a decrease in revenue in the budget of approximately, I mean, $15,000 to $20,000.
So we'd have to find another revenue stream to cover that, to do umpires and the other things. It sounds like they're going, that it's going toward.
Yes, I mean, so it would just be a budget, it would be a budget revenue decrease when we look at FY '27 budget. We would just be short $20,000. So it would increase our net spending.
Right.
Louis, if this is going on and it just came to light within a month or so ago, why wasn't this brought up before?
Which piece? I don't know. Can you be more specific?
The fact that the Booster Club supposedly didn't have permission agreement that they would keep the gate. I mean, they've been doing it all year long and then all of a sudden.
Seven years.
It's been, I guess, and then from what I understand, the Booster Club was asked to repay back the gate fees they took in this year. Now, if you knew this was going on all year long, why wasn't it addressed earlier?
So this was uncovered about, I want to say maybe a month and a half, two months ago. Last time it was realized, the money, the gate receipts were taken. So this, this came up about two years ago when the gate receipts came out of student activities. They were going to the Student Activities Fund. They were taken out of Student Activities Fund and put it back into the general fund. And that is the case, that is what is happening this year. I discussed it with the administration. I discussed it with my supervisor and let them both know what was happening. And then we clarified. And we were, we had requested the detailed reports from the school showing the gate receipts for each game, so that we knew the proper amount to switch over from the Student Activity Fund to the general fund.
So I think we could pay, we could pay refs and umpires from the Student Activity Fund. Why can't we do that? Louis?
So currently we pay refs, so for varsity refs, we're paying those to an arbiter, which is a statewide program because they all run through the BPA. So that's coming out directly out of the Corey Valley General Fund and operating bank account.
But it could be switched over, right?
So are you suggesting that they would use this money to pay for refs?
Absolutely. Anything to do with a student activity would get, would get funded through these student activity funds.
So there's not enough money coming in from gate receipts to cover refs?
Then we'll have to, we'll have to, to, to bring other monies in from another account. But it can help support and, and, and help pay for itself.
So what would be the purpose of putting it in student activities then? If we're going to still use that to pay for expenses? Our expense budget for athletics is far greater than the amount we're bringing in gate receipts. This is, it's just the revenue that's coming in is just a fraction.
So then, so then why even, why even collect gate fees? Why don't we just make it free for the public? They're already paying taxes.
That's a board decision. I just make, I make procedures for our current, for our current process. And most schools charge for football and basketball. I have a question, why don't we charge for baseball? I mean, these are just questions, but it's kind of the standard, I think. I just don't want to find any procedures to come, to goes along with the process already in place.
Okay, so I'll rescind this motion and I'll make a motion to not, not take in any activity fees for any activities students put on. Do I have any discussion on that?
I, I think that, two things. One.
And I just want to recognize Mike because he has his hand up.
Oh, go ahead.
Mike? Go ahead, Mike.
Could you have an idea based on, I'm trying to get there. Based on Eric's original push, which he's now rescinded, so maybe this question is not appropriate. But I was concerned that if we were going to have to have an outside audit, if he had an idea, what would possibly be for that outside audit just for this?
We'd have to determine that.
We have, we already currently have an outside audit every year. The audits are operating accounts and our student activities accounts. That's a current process.
So that would be just, okay, all right. I just want to make sure that if it was a cent, it had a percent, we take into consideration the costs.
Yeah, no, so no additional costs. It's already a current process.
So two things. I feel like as a board member that I'm one person that was left in the dark. We came to the board meeting. This is an added item. Some people at the table already knew what the discussion was going to be, obviously. Since you came prepared with motions, came prepared with the letter. The rest of us are just hearing it for the first time. I think to take action at this meeting is a little premature. I think we should.
I think we can take action.
I think we can too.
And why do we make an agenda?
It was added to the agenda.
There's always additions and subtractions for the agenda. It happens. I don't see an issue with adding this to my.
What are we taking for action first? I'm confused.
We're at the point where we're saying, no money anywhere.
Why don't you just let schools charge what they're charging and that goes to like the Booster Club? And I mean, it's.
It goes to the school.
Booster clubs are a great thing for the school. And how big is our budget? Twenty something million? Twenty thousand? That's a penny. That's me personally, but.
Agreed. Did. This Booster Club isn't even a part of the school, is it? Isn't it an independent?
But they give a lot of stuff to the school. Scoreboards, uniforms.
All boosters clubs do.
Exactly. I didn't, I said they do.
Lisa, what was your second thing? My second thing was he said, no charge. That means nothing plays, anything like that. If you're not, if you're not charging for, you're not charging for anything. And the theater program generally uses those funds to help assist with the next program. So.
Well, if we're going to take ticket sales from one thing and put it in the general fund, then we should take ticket sales from everything and put it into a general fund.
I.
In my opinion, that's my opinion. But you know, you're welcome to your own.
I think this is a personnel issue and should be addressed in executive session. I, I think we've talked a lot about it in an open session, but I think there are personnel aspects of this that should be addressed before a decision is made.
Louis, I have a question. Did you not, and I wasn't at the Booster Club meeting, but did you not speak with Mark and inform him of all this? So this is not new. That was well over a month ago?
I can answer that question. He talked to me. I was supposed to go to the March meeting. I was sick that day, so I was not able to attend the March Booster Club meeting. And I was going to present it to the Booster Club at that meeting, but I was out. I had that stomach bug and was out that, those three days. So that was the plan. It was for me to go to the Booster Club meeting.
But it was a known fact before tonight. It was a known fact before tonight that this is what Louis was presenting. Okay, thank you.
I actually spoke to the Booster Club on that that night because.
Not to focus, not to focus outside of Pultenley, like.
Yeah. It was an unknown fact to other people on the board, so.
Yeah, to me. And I mean, I don't, I'm not involved with sports at all. So I don't know anything about the operation of booster clubs and things like that generally. So just with the facts on the table, that there was a policy in place that tickets or sales are supposed to go for that, for the gate. Tickets are supposed to go in the general fund and they're not. There, I have questions about that because I, you know, if those are the, the facts on the table and I don't have the background context, I haven't lived here for, you know, I haven't been the finance manager for 17 years, et cetera. So for me to make a decision, I feel like I, you know, so I'm lacking information about, say, financial impacts of moving funds around. I'd love to have a clearer picture of, you know, if there, if it feels like there's a more fair way to take in money and distribute money for various student activities, right? Of which sports are one, theater and band and arts and all those other types of activities, then it would be, I feel like there's a bigger picture piece that I don't, I don't know what the impacts of moving one thing around would be on the other things. So if you're talking about a comprehensive reconfiguration of how money comes in for student activities and how it goes out, I mean, I personally need more information about how that's set up right now and then what the potential impacts would be of moving different funds around. So that, that's where I'm at right now.
Louis, you said there's a, or we've talked about a policy. Is there a procedure that goes with that policy that's a financial policy? And is there a procedure that goes with?
So I know that more policy you gave than thrown out there because it's not actually this whole policy. It's just a current process. We have a cash transporting procedure.
Alright, so there's no.
The cash transporting procedure does not reference gate receipts directly. It just references cash that, cash that's coming in, that's going into the operating account. But the current process, which is not a written process, it's just a process in place, has been heavily discussed.
So there's no policy, no procedure. It's just a word of, word of mouth thing.
No process. I mean, it's, Louis sends us a process.
There's nothing in writing saying that this is how it has to be. He's saying there's no policy.
Well, the business, I, I think there are, we should be in executive session. I think there are personnel issues that need to be discussed that.
I don't think there's personnel issues.
I don't, I agree. I don't think there's any personnel issues.
This is a cut, cut dry case.
Really?
I have a motion on the table. I would like a vote on it.
Okay, so your vote is no money whatsoever?
No money whatsoever because I don't want to waste any more time on money and events.
Can I ask a question? The boosters was concerned that you're doing a lot of things with this money that you would no longer be able to do with this money, correct? And so eliminating that money creates the same problem for the boosters, that you no longer can do these things. And I, maybe this is a question for Louis, but like, is, is there a problem or is there something in place that you, when something's put in the general fund, the boosters couldn't come to Joe and request to use that money for X, Y, or Z?
That's what I was kind of saying here on this first one.
Right, but if it's already, the process is through the general fund, is there, is there like, like I know my booster comes to me and says like, we want to do this or that. And I say, okay, great. And I just do that with them. And then they have their own money that they're doing through our concessions and other things. So we work together and it, it hasn't been a problem. But I don't know if there's a, a process that is in place for that.
A lot of times, like the cheerleaders that are going to Hawaii, they fundraise and they also ask the Booster Club, Spanish Club. They fundraise, they also ask. We don't fund the entire thing. It's just, you know, a donation per se. But it's just not sports. It's everything across the board.
It's the drama club. We sent the drama club to, the art club. We've helped students that have had life-changing events that could use a little help with some of the money from the Booster Club. Because I am part of the Booster Club.
Boot shelf, young and hard. You know, it's not just the school here. It's the town, the, the kids. And in the end, it's the kids that are going to hear from it.
Right, so I'm not sure if you're helping the town. If the Booster Club should be part of the school, I mean, part of something that goes into the general fund? I mean, that, the town, you have the Proctor fund. That doesn't go into the general fund, but you help people.
But that's not something that comes from our events.
That's not a revenue source for, for, that's, that's a grant, that's specific.
Do you have something in Proctor that you use to help people? That's not part of the general fund? That helps the town?
It's not part of the school.
Proctor Cares, which is a.
Separate entity.
Separate entity. It has nothing to do with the school.
But if this is a town thing that just happens to help the kids, but it also helps the town, I don't even think it should belong to the general fund. It's something that has. It's something that has, belongs to the town. It doesn't belong to just the school and go into it. And the thing that you said, "skimming," which was really disrespectful, because you didn't explain, you just said the word, and I know you're upset, but it, it just, you know, maybe the discussion respectfully is, what is the difference between the general fund and the booster club? Because it sounds like if you're helping people in the senior center, that's a whole, that's a town fund that just happens to help the kids in the school. Do we stop helping the kids and then the booster club just becomes the town fund? I don't know. But I don't think they were skimming. I think that that was just something that, you know, if it did come to your attention and you did follow the, the chain of command, here it is with us in the, in the board. I don't think anybody did it to, to hurt or to skim. I think that was just something. So I, I think this, this fund should stay with the town. It's not part of the general fund. But again, that's my, my opinion.
Can I ask, Cindy, did I misspeak regarding the outside school, like the young at heart, the food shelf, stuff like that?
What would kind of do on now is anything that we take in, or ticket sales or whatever, Jen puts in a, in a house. Our booster club has, we have our own account. So the more that we could use the athletic account for, for like buying uniforms and stuff, we could use that and the booster club got the money. And in the past, the booster club has, we have, every year we get to, young at heart, we get to the treaty given, comes out of our booster club.
Thank you. I just...
I think the thing, when we found our thing, and Dave, Dave was the A D. My personal opinion is, we kind of get an A D, he's like, "Okay, here's the gate receipts." And we're like, "Okay." So we started putting things in separate accounts, so we, we know what we got there. And so I think when it came that, I didn't realize it went into a general fund. And I don't know what's going on in the general fund. But I think our thing was, we worked really hard at the gates, and we dug a lot of money in, and we're giving lots back to the kids, more so than has ever been that, which is the name of the job. So, well, the thing I think that really, my thing was, okay, so if it has to go into the general fund, why is our football, because we don't have, or West Rattlin and Procter don't have football, are we giving a bigger, a rim of the pie in our general fund? Or...
It's all just one fund. It's not separated.
Yeah, but that general fund is paying to recondition your helmets. All those things come across our warrant, so those, that sport is being supported through the general fund also. So, like you said, we don't have it, but it's being supported out of the general fund. So since no one cares if we talk about personnel issues, then I'll just throw it on the table here, since everybody thinks everything's right out in the open. If this has been going on and Louis spoke and did, already did grab back, so to speak, so that the booster fund paid back, and now we're doing it again, my question is, why are not the administrators of this facility following the same procedure as the administrators of the other buildings?
There's no policy in place.
There's no written policy.
Right.
So this is why...
Why didn't we have a written policy? Why didn't the board establish a written policy?
That's why it's not a big deal, and that's why I just, that's why for Louis to say it was skimming, I mean, there's no policy in place. I, I don't see an...
Doesn't the finance department make...
So here, here, my motion, I'm, I'm, we're done.
I'm done, sorry. I take real issue with those comments. I mean, just we have many things that we don't have a policy.
Louis, 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 Louis! No, no!
Yeah, we're going to let him speak, Eric. You don't get to just be the director.
I do.
No, you don't. This is a board meeting, and you don't get to cut off...
Well, you don't, you don't, you don't start screaming. You say that you have to speak, and then I recognize you.
So let him speak. He's trying to speak.
I have a motion on the, on the floor and no, I would like to vote.
And there's discussion, and discussion is taking place.
Louis, go ahead.
We have many things in the business office that, where everything is not spelled out, but there is many communications that go out to administrators on how things should be done, such as I send out an annual email regarding P O closes, I send out annual emails about E R N closes, which have specific information that administrators need to follow. These written communications work as written procedures. There's, I, there's so many different scenarios, we can't have written procedures for everything. And if every other administrator knows the process that needs to be followed, you can't just, the fact that there's not written procedures that are on our website can't be the excuse as to why they're not being followed.
Why not?
So we just need something in place moving forward, and that's what we're, we're trying to accomplish now, I think, so.
Right.
So it, what happened before doesn't matter. We're trying to move forward from it.
I can't hear anything that someone's saying.
Just speak up, Louis. I'm sorry.
Louis, I, I don't think it matters what's happened before. We're trying to move forward from it now and put something in place, so that there's not these discrepancies or issues.
So is it the intent of this board that you're going to start making finance policy?
No, I asked if there was one.
I understand.
I'm not asking if he's going to write one. I asked if there was one. So that's different than making policy for finance. I asked him if there was one, because I really think that this, this is different than the S A F. It's a town, it's, it's, it's part of the town, and I think that's why no one came forward with it, because they're helping the elderly, they're, they're helping their school. I don't think anybody thought of the fact that this was something that was just for, like, the things that you do for your school and the things that West Rattlin does was exactly for funding the things of the school. I think this fund, because it became a fund of the town, I don't think anybody thought of it as a one of, geez, we need to put this in the fund of the, of the school. I think that's what the issue is, is that because it does more than just help the school, it helps the town. So if it helps the town, you know, the issue would be, do we vote on it continuing to do that and let it go, because it does help the entire town? Or do we separate and do something different with it, as we've been doing, you know, so for six years or seven years, or even before that? Because this sounds like this has been going on even before we came together. It was a, a town fund to help people. So this has been going on for years and years and years. I don't think anybody was trying to do anything wrong. I think they were trying to do something right, and it just happened to do, it happened to help the school at the same time. That's my perception.
Clarifying question. So the, we're talking about gate tickets specifically, right? And that's a piece of probably the fundraising that this boosters group does, because you fund other, so are the gate tickets the only revenue that funds all of the drama and the town and all the things that you, that, you know, the other sort of donations and support that you do? Or is it, is it a piece? Because that, that's the piece we're talking about, right?
It's more than just gate. I mean, they do fundraisers, they've got golf tournaments, coin drops, all that stuff.
There's two separate accounts, you were saying. The ticket...
Right.
Separated from...
And so, and that, and that's just the piece. Because I just wanted to clarify to you for me, because what I heard was if we don't have the gate ticket money, we can't do it, we can't do anything. And I'm just trying to get a little more clear for me on what, what that means specifically. So it's the, it doesn't close down all of the things, it doesn't close down helping the town and things like that.
It will cut down on a lot that is given to the kids, which is my bottom line.
Can I ask, like, how this doesn't fall under code F seven, our policy about student athletics, where it says that all school-sponsored athletics, clubs and activities, as well as student-run non-curricular related procedures will be under the ultimate control of the district and will comply with all policies and procedures of the school?
I think because of the town piece.
Right, but it's a school-sponsored activity with your football, basketball.
Right, but I think, again, it goes back to that holistic thing, and that's why I think the people felt maybe, and perhaps they didn't even know that there was a C seven, you said?
F seven.
F seven. Okay, because they were thinking that we're doing, I mean, when you look at it, it's, it's sort of like, I mean, you, I don't know, there are things that probably West Rattlin does for its people and Procter does for its people. So I don't think that there, again, I don't think there was a...
I don't find there to be malintention. You guys were just doing things for your town.
Right, I think it was just that, because it was that holistic piece.
I'm just wondering now, with looking at it in that lens, potentially, not that you, you know, people don't, you weren't doing anything because you thought, "Oh, we're taking this money and we're," you know, I don't think that anyone, I don't hear that, I don't believe that. I'm just wondering if, if that is in there about that, how can, how, it sounds like the, the thing to move forward is like, how can you continue doing great things for your town and be under this policy too, right? Like, how can we come to that place, maybe?
I also think the other issue for me is, listening to Louis, now, one, that the memo has been sent out, it wasn't just two months ago that it, you already did a grab back, what, three years ago or something like that? This, people in positions of authority knew that what was transpiring was...
Are we talking personnel in open session right now?
I asked to go into executive session, and nobody wants to.
I'm asking, are we talking personnel? Because we all know who you're talking about. Are we talking personnel in open session? I just want to know that. I want to know that.
I asked to go into executive session.
I would like, I would like a vote on my motion. I'm done discussing.
Look, this is what happened. I'm trying to keep calm here. Louis is going to disagree with me. This came up a few years ago. Dave and I talked to him. Louis is saying we didn't have this conversation. We were trying to figure out, okay, yes, we gave the money back, Dave was keeping it in the student account fund. Louis said, "You guys owe this ticket money." We put the ticket money back to him. We said, "What if, like, the booster club took it? They're the ones taking the ticket. Can they take that, put it in a separate account? It's not part of the general fund, and that way the money kind of stays here in town." Louis is saying, we didn't, when he and I talked a couple weeks, a couple months ago, he's saying he didn't remember that conversation. That was the conversation. Dave and I kind of talked about it, presented it to the booster club, because how long you been doing this? Two years? Taking the ticket money and putting it into, you guys started your separate account, it was like two years ago, we did that. When he told us, said, "Fine, we'll pay it back, not a problem." That's all it was. It wasn't a malintention. It wasn't, "We're skimming." It wasn't, "I'm not paying attention to the damn policies" and that type of thing. It was one of those situations. I like to try to find solutions to problems. I was trying to find a solution. We thought we came up with a solution. That was it. What, what are we talking about? We're not talking a lot of money. If that's what it has, the booster club has been around for, I don't know how many years. They do this, they do a lot of fundraisers, they do a lot of things. This money is not going to the senior center, it's not, this is just something that they brought in. We've had different groups go to them. I've gone to them in the past, saying, "Can we get this to help out with certain things?"
Coaches.
And coaches go in, you know, ask for stuff. That's all this was, okay? I'm sorry, I'm trying to sit here and not talk about, I'm trying to keep my mouth shut, but I didn't think this was the place to do it. I wanted to figure if we were going in executive session, but we're not, so I'm going to, going to start talking about it. But that's what it was. And Louis and I had this conversation. We did not, Louis is saying we didn't have this conversation. Dave and I kind of came away from that conversation we had two years ago, when he said, "You need to have the money in the general fund. How can we do this and kind of keep the money here?" It wasn't malicious, it wasn't a big, it wasn't a big, you know, "We don't care what the policy says."
So here's my motion.
We tried to find a way around it. We thought we had the green light to go ahead and do it. That's all this was.
Here's my motion. My motion's on the table. We've discussed it long enough. I'd like a vote. The motion was not to take any fees for any student activities. All in favor?
Why don't you tell a person?
We should do a real call vote.
Do a real call. Hat?
Aye. Aye.
The votes should be out in the bag. Remember what people are saying.
Well, we don't have a list.
Okay.
Can I say, can I, I know you're starting. Can I say something?
The vote's already on the floor, so.
Then can I just cut your acting up? There's a motion on the floor. So you can ask any more questions about, like, this impact theater or anything?
Oh, so we have to wait till the votes?
Lauren?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
Lisa?
No.
Tom?
I'm confused, I'm sorry. So this is saying, no more money in gate, gate ticket fees.
Not just for sports, though. Your motion was for drama, any student activity.
It's okay. You can vote any way you want.
I know, but I'm trying to, I'd like to see the money come in still, but go to the booster clubs in all three schools.
There's no discussion, there's only voting.
Okay, we got to vote.
Whatever, yes.
Yeah.
Sarah?
No.
Lisa? You already did it, sorry.
I'm happy to vote again, but...
Jessica?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Mike didn't vote.
Oh, sorry, Mike. Go ahead.
No. I don't know.
Okay, ayes have it.
On our charge.
Nope.
Move the vote, go.
Four ayes and three noes. Okay.
That's only seven votes.
Five ayes.
Excuse me, five ayes, I'm sorry. Sorry, five ayes.
Where are we on the agenda now? Are we back at the minutes?
Eric, is that effective immediately then, correct?
Correct.
Okay, moving on to the articles of agreement. Okay, moving on to the Articles of Agreement.
One, two, three. Page one.
I was paying three minutes to read it.
I should have read it.
Okay. Is everybody ready?
Any questions?
No.
Any changes? That's good, I just wanted everybody to, you know, we can look at pages two and three next time, okay? Because when I went to the V S B A meeting last night, they said you should look at your Articles of Agreement, I think they said every two years. We hadn't looked at ours in, what, six, so.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Um, moving on to consent agenda. The minutes of March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, and March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five.
So moved?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Approval of the warrants, so I have a motion to approve the warrants.
I'll make the motion.
A motion has been made, any discussion on the warrants? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Superintendent report.
Thank you, Eric, I have a few things to, I'm going to kind of reverse the order on the agenda. I'm going to talk first about the Budget Communication Survey. As most of you know, that this year we developed a G R C S U Budget Communication Plan, the final piece to that was a survey. Last month, I placed a copy of a draft survey in the Board Resource folder, it was in there this month as well. And I'd asked last month if there was any feedback to provide that to me. I have not heard back from anyone, so I am assuming that it looks good to go. And if the board is okay, then I will work with Gray Connors and Shannon Moriarty on developing a survey that'll go out end of April, early May, to all of our stakeholders, provide feedback. And once I have that feedback, I'll look to provide that at the June board meeting, for the board to review and take a look at it, particularly as we begin thinking about budgeting for next year. The second item that's listed here is around G R C S U Board Member Orientation Training. This is really, was around the new board member orientation. This year, each year we review what we do with our board members in terms of orientation. And I know in the past, we've had, just scheduled a quick meeting to, you know, kind of go over some items. We've had a document that lists, you know, all the resources that one may, one to access. We thought we wanted to do something a little bit different this year because, over the course of the year and how complex, you know, being a school board member really is, and particularly with all the issues going on with, you know, locally, state level as well as national level, and also to better align with the district quality standards, which we've all seen that go into effect July one of, you know, twenty twenty-five. We are going to create a, we call it a board member orientation, so at five o'clock, prior to the start of the G R Assistant Board Meeting, we will have a forty-five minute training, which will be inviting new board members to attend, all board members can attend. And it'll cover various topics, you know, it would be just, you know, Robert's Rules for Small Boards, talk about open meeting law, how we handle open meeting law situations, you know, what constitutes a quorum. I know that that's a, an issue that a lot of us face, particularly if, say, we're at a basketball game or a baseball game, and three or four of us are sitting around talking, and someone comes up and says, hey, I got a question about something you guys talked about at the last board meeting. If we have a, you know, does that constitute a quorum or not? And I think those are scenarios that we, we just want to kind of walk through and discuss. This is not meant to be really, you know, too in-depth, but it really is an opportunity just to begin scratching the surface and introducing some topics. And this will occur on a month-to-month basis, and it'll be in conjunction with our, the executive committee. So, and if there are topics that board members would like to add, you know, obviously just reach out to board chair or myself. But the agenda for the year was developed on the Vermont School Board Association's, they developed, had a new board member orientation checklist of a lot of items, so we just pulled from there and broke it out on a month-to-month basis. So we think this will be a little more robust. But this way then, when the, this board has to attest that they have engaged in board member, you know, training, that we have a process in place, the board can, you know, decide off and say, yes, that we have a process in place. So we're.
Can I just add something to, just to the, what you were talking about, the proficiencies? That last night, they said at the V S B A that after they wrote, we wrote the proficiencies last year, then we wrote, how do you know if you're proficient? You know, did you do this, 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 and this? So they sent that to the A O E, and they, last year, and they're still waiting for the A O E to send it back to say, now you can use that. So even though we have the proficiencies in place, we don't have the checklist of saying that you are proficient back from the A O E. So that's on a hold at this point, is what they said last night.
Are you talking about the proficiencies from the D Q S, Linda?
Yes, the governance issues for the boards, yes.
Okay, all right, just, okay, very clear, okay, all right, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I know at the last board meeting, there was a discussion or a question around impacts, particularly as we look at what's happening at the federal level, national level, state level, if there are any sort of impacts to our federal funding. And at this point, there are no impacts to our federal funding, so we have not lost any money. I know that, you know, all of you received an email from me on Monday about Title VI. And so what, I'll just kind of briefly explain just the context around this. Each year, superintendents have to attest, and, you know, typically it's in the middle of January, there's a large document checklist that goes through around from special education to curriculum, a large variety of things, you know, state laws, statutes, federal laws, that we have to say that we are in compliance with. And we, we, we work with our building administrators, with our directors, you know, everyone, and we go off, we check off, like, if we're in compliance, or if there is an issue around, say, like, school nurses or school librarians, that, you know, that we are in, you know, we're still in progress, we're trying to find or staff that, then we have to work with the state on a plan of what that may look like, you know, so, but it's what we have to do. Title VI, which is the Civil Rights Act, is just something that each year we have to, you know, sign off on, it's federal law. We don't have a choice in the matter one way or another. What I guess caused, you know, some of this backlash is just people's interpretations of what that meant and what that could possibly mean in terms of, in our schools, and particularly with Title I funding. And if we may lose this, if we don't sign and attest this, that will we lose Title I funding or not? But I know that, you know, myself and other superintendents said, we're talking during, over the course of the weekend, we had meetings all Monday morning. But then Secretary Saunders and Charity Clark, who's the Vermont Attorney General, made the decision that, as most other states have, like, look, our schools are in compliance with federal laws, you know, we will attest to that, and we'll continue to go on moving forward. It does not impact, you know, the work we're doing with our schools, you know, we do have a strategic plan in place in which we continue to talk about making sure that our schools are, are safe, they're welcoming, you know, for all students, that students feel valued, feel cared for, feel affirmed, we still will be doing that. And, you know, still providing, you know, that all our students have, you know, equitable access to programming and education. And now, with no longer gate receipts, everybody can come free, so that's not even a concern, so everybody has access to, to all of our events.
Yep.
So, so, so that's kind of where we're at with federal funding, you know, along those ways, so. And then also, the other item around the, is H four fifty-four, seeing that's still, we've heard that it probably be, come out of House Appropriations by tomorrow, and once it goes out there, that's into the Senate, and then, you know, we don't necessarily know what's going to happen. We are keeping a close eye on class sizes, particularly at the high school setting, what that may look like, you know, particularly with core courses and, you know, across our three buildings. We look at elementary school class sizes, we'll look at school choice, you know, just keep an eye on that, tuitioning, the impacts, even, you know, so. There are just a lot of things that we are keeping close on, but I know that one, the one thing with H four fifty-four, it has pushed back, I know that Governor Scott has said that by the end of this legislative session, he wants lines to be drawn, or have a map of the state of Vermont, how it's going to be redistricted. The H four fifty-four has asked for a, a pushback, I think it's December of twenty twenty-five.
The District Subcommittee.
Yes, so groups that could come together and really look at this, and when they present three proposals, that it will be more thought out and really take all these other factors into consideration, as opposed to some of the maps we've seen, that's, have been already put out there, so. So I'll be more happy to answer any questions about any of that, so.
Nope, hit it off.
Okay.
Thanks. Principal reports. Dave, you would start?
Um, sure, I just wanted to highlight a few things. One of us, our Night of Shining Stars that we had, I spoke about it at the last meeting, it was a wonderful evening. Probably had between seven hundred and eight hundred people come. It was a wonderful community event. Our outreach to community agencies like the Fire Department, and the Historical Society, and a few other groups, I think really paid off. We've got a lot of compliments, people who didn't even have children there, from other schools were there and complimented us on that. I also wanted to highlight our drama club, presented at the Mill River One Act Festival. They did a presentation called, or a play called #Viral. It was about cyberbullying and the negative effects of that. That was such a, a hit that they are doing an encore performance of that, I believe this weekend. So I've got to actually talk, because I believe they were going to charge a fee for that. So I'll, I'll, I'll address that too as well. And lastly, our student council worked for a group, organization that's done work with us before, across all of the Quarry Valley Schools in Rutland Town, called Up For Learning, and they unpacked the Youth Risk Survey, they have a follow-up meeting in a couple of weeks, and they've created an action plan. It takes a lot for the student council to kind of get jazzed up about something, and they came back and said it was a wonderful use of their time. The people from Up For Learning reached out and said, what a wonderful group of kids. It's a smaller group, so we asked each one of them to invite a friend. And so it actually, we had double the number of students there for that event, so that was a really positive thing all the way around. Any questions about my report, though?
Do you want us to review the V I T C A P data at this time too, or is that just informational?
Okay, so my, the V I T C A P data for each one of our schools is in your packet. I would actually go to page sixteen on my report, which is notable trends and analysis. And what we have seen, again, we're a couple of years in, right? End of V I T C A P, we've yet to really be able to see what are the types of questions they're asking. They give us practice questions. Jen's been actually instrumental in trying to get all those organized for the, for the S U. And our teachers, just like all the other teachers, have unpacked what those sample questions are, to try to give us a hint as to what they are. But what we did see was a ten percent growth in E L A, which was trending right towards the state average. In math, we only saw two percent growth in twenty-three, twenty-four school year. We did see a concern with the, one, in particular cohort, the eighth grade. It's not indicative of their past testing, I look at cohorts, how did this set of students do in first grade, second grade, third grade? It was not their normal trend, so we are looking at that, it's not anything instructional. But it was something that, that flagged my, my going, hey. In science, we are at the state average. We certainly are working a lot more on inquiry across our schools, certainly at West Rutland, and trying to step up that inquiry model, following the scientific model, students being able to look at results and draw some conclusions, that higher-order thinking skills that is so important within science, well, and across all the grade levels or subject areas. So some of the things that we're looking at, and again, some of this is kind of admiring the problem, but we are working with the students on the practice test, part of this is, I hate to say, you got to get used to taking the test. Also, we talked about increasing student stamina. It's, 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 it's a marathon, not a sprint. Students, we, we look at testing, we try to look at what time of day they're taking it, you know, how long are these subtests? Those types of things, there's a lot that goes into it, and sometimes just a little leveraging, having some snacks, breaks, will that actually increase the student's score? So we're throwing a lot out there, there's a lot of us who have done testing for a long time. And just as importantly, we are doing data meetings twice a year across every grade level, and at the high school level, trying to unpack the, the data, and what does this mean when it comes to our instruction? You know, we work very collaboratively with the, the other high schools when we have our in-services, our, our professional learning community meetings, where we're looking at both scope and sequence, but we're also coming up with and spearheading common assessments, so the students, regardless of what school they go to at Quarry Valley, are getting as much of a common experience as they can to try to, you know, one, learn, but two, also, you know, we unfortunately do have to, you know, be accountable within these test scores, whether we agree with the test or not, it is the metric that we have, and we try to have our students be as representative as we can, because we know that they're really are learning, but there's definitely areas where we need to improve. We're a couple of years into this, you know, and we are, I think, I like to see the growth. Yes, it's great that we're at the state average, but I'd like to see it higher.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
I will just, I have a question to ask that didn't actually make it into my board report, our senior trip that you guys approved going to Montreal, I need to request that we actually go to Boston instead, we cannot find a bus that will take us across the border or come across the border back with us, given the current dynamics in our country. And so I need to change our request to go to Boston. Same dates.
Do you need a motion?
I don't know, do I?
I'll make a motion that you go to Boston.
Thank you.
Motion's been made, any discussion?
You need to rescind the original motion.
Okay.
I would like to rescind the original motion, and make the motion that they go to Boston and not Montreal. Thank you, Mike.
Okay, a motion's been made, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There you go.
We also have a play coming up this weekend, Alice Wonderland, and we are excited to announce that students from each one of our towns in G R C S U are in this play, it is, was open to everyone. And there's the littles that have been running around the building that are just really fun to be around when you're working with secondary all the time. So please come, there are shows on Saturday at one and seven. all the time. So please come. There are shows on Saturday at one and seven. And it's not a musical if you're someone that's like not a fan of musicals.
Jen, can I ask a question? Have you sold tickets in advance for this play?
We have not. We only always sell them at the door.
Okay, just want to make sure with the motion tonight, just that we
No, we only always sell them at the door. And then I also just wanted to highlight that all of our 10th and 11th graders were at Castleton on Wednesday. They had a career in college fair going on there and they came back and they had all these swag bags and it was an amazing event. And then they are going to, I think Tracy has kind of helped put this together, a trades day at Castleton. We're actually taking our whole school over there, seven through twelve to Castleton coming up. And we're really excited to explore trades with kids, too, just as well as college and career fields. And so my takeaways are also on slide sixteen. Things that you might notice is that we made a marked change in proficiency in both ELA and science. We actually are close to seventy percent proficient in ELA, which is well above the state average. When comparing math proficiency from last year, we leveled at thirty percent, which I anticipated this happening. And so that's why one of our goals for this year was to create a math plan. We have a literacy plan and we've been working on that. One of my teachers, Patty Ryan, and I just presented at the All Learners Network Conference that was put on by the AOE about our math plan and our school-wide math. We just finished our March Math Madness. It's a lot of Ms., in which kids are redo whole school math and do some fun competitions with it, too. So we've, and we're using the cognitive, cogniaformia sets to like guide instruction and to plan for these tests. We're hoping to really, all the effort that we're putting into math will pay off for us next year, really trying to fight sort of that math phobia that certain kids have when it just comes to doing math and and doing math on a test, too, can be really anxiety provoking. So all that information is in there as well, if you have any questions.
Great.
Just follow up. Yep. Tracy actually put the, she did the Castleton thing yesterday as well. We had a group of students go there. Covered in Forge has nice looking bags that they came back with. We are doing the same thing. Our whole school's going to the trades program on, I believe it's May twentieth. It's right here. At first it was supposed to be like nine through twelve or something like that. When they opened it up, we just decided it would be a great thing for everybody to go there, all our students. Bring back the trades. Another addition, I forgot to take the picture. I know most of you parked out front, but if you go out back, the town has a snowplow out there and it's a town opulnly. It's painted. Our art club did that. It was great.
Just noticed that the other day.
Yeah, they, they did it a while ago. They actually brought it into the bus garage because they were doing it like in February. And then they just put it out a couple of weeks ago out there. So it was nice, the collaboration with the town and stuff like that. I get to look out my window every day and see it. So it's kind of nice. Our VITCAP trends, we are, one of our focuses we're going to work on, especially towards next year, is literacy. And, you know, we were looking at this and just with Mark and I doing our walkthroughs and stuff, is given the scores, we want to question, are students able to comprehend the questions, especially in science and math? You know, just looking at, again, just walking through classrooms and kids trying to read the word problems in math and stuff like that. Interventionist, we're in our second year, so how do we maximize our interventionist? And we actually are trying to, you know, not only with, not only one-to-one or small group, but how do we get them into other core subjects so our literacy can get into like, you know, science and, you know, that type of stuff, social studies. And we did this year switch middle school. We were doing half a year global citizenship, half a year science. This year, we're doing a full year. They're splitting the block. So the kids are getting it because we moved it. So our eighth graders were in the fall or the spring semester, so they were taking science while the VITCAP, but we're halfway through the semester and they took the test. So, you know, they're still not doing it. Again, we're looking to, to change some stuff around. Many of our students complete their science credits as freshmen and sophomores. Joe loves it when she gets all the freshmen in there. And part of it is, these kids want to go to Stafford and stuff like that. You try to get their core classes out of the way. You know, one of our, one of our teachers did talk to, I was talking to him yesterday during our staff meeting. We were looking at data and he said, I asked my 11th graders, like, you know, scale of one to 10, how hard are you going to try on the VITCAP? And, you know, and the kids were kind of like, he goes, they're on, they're like six, seven, we're going to try, you know, and do the best we can. And they came back, it's like, you know, some of this stuff was like, you know, we didn't, we learned it our freshman year and we, you know, it's just kind of, so again, trying to get those practice tests and stuff like that. And looking at how we do our, you know, same thing with our math. Our ninth graders allow them to take the math in the fall. And it's just, that's just the way our schedule works. And, you know, a few of them take it in the spring semester right now, but, yeah, we can only do what we can do with the classes we have. So it's a lot of pluses to a block schedule and semesters, but there's some things that, you know, we can play around with our middle school a lot. That schedule, we have some flexibility with, but the high school schedule is kind of set in stone. Not set in stone, but you know what I'm saying? It's a little tougher to, they can't just say, hey, we're going to flop classes today and this and that because they don't have the same kids.
Okay, thank you.
Joe, it was science and what was the other middle school?
Social study, global citizenship. I still call it social studies, but, yeah. So we have two new teachers this year and that. And I think next year, we're talking about doing like an A-day, B-day, like, you know, they're just going to flip-flop every other day, but it's still going to be year-round. Right now, they're, they're splitting half the blocks, but then it'll be like, I'm taking the seventh graders today and you have the eighth graders for a full block and then tomorrow we split. And, you know, then we'll, like twice a week, we have a full block. So next year, I think we're looking at an A-day, B-day schedule with those kids, but.
Okay, nice.
Creative.
Being creative, trying to get it all in.
You have my written report. I would like to publicly congratulate our librarian, Stacy Allen. She received the Cliff Grant Award. So that will be up to $25,000 in author visits, illustrators, books for students and families. So she did a really nice job of getting the application together and I'm very proud of her. And that's great for us and for our kids. The VITCAP, we did our science testing this past two days. So next week, we start ELA and math, but we're starting, we have a, I'm sorry, I'm having difficulty. We're starting off with a Snap Snatchers event for the kids. There are 25 pictures of each student or each teacher in grades three through six. And the kids go off, it's kind of like a scavenger hunt. And the first one who gets their, the picture of their teacher first, they win a box of candy. Don't tell them. But we're doing that to start them off and just to kind of keep them. I'm really having trouble.
Motivated, keep them motivated and ready for testing. Yep.
Can you come back to me?
Sorry. Yeah.
All right. Let's move on to, to old business, school consolidation. We were supposed to bring back reasons. I think Sarah asked, like, why? Why do we want to consolidate schools? Was the question you, you had for the board.
A while ago. I mean, I'm happy to revisit that, but I don't think that was where we ended our conversation last time.
No. I thought that's what we were supposed to do, bring back the reasons why. Was it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, when I looked at the, I thought, I always go back to the strategic plan because since we wrote the strategic plan, it's our guiding force of over the next, up until what, 2028 or 2029?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight? So if you look at that, improving academic achievement and student growth, you know, we've got the VITCAP and things like that. But looking at CTE, we're doing a lot in terms of helping kids reading, writing, math, science. And, and I know we've got Stafford. I'd like to, you know, one of the things is I'd like to see is more CTE in our technical in our district. We're not doing as much in that. So when I looked at that, implement and refine a coordinated curriculum so that it would have, looking at that in terms of that we would, if we did do something like that, we would need more, we would have to look for teachers and a curriculum and starting it earlier. I have found that kids, and it came up in Stafford, I'm not on Stafford anymore, my kids, but we did talk about that in some of the Stafford things, is that kids don't really know what's going on in the job force in terms of the things that you can do. They don't have any idea sometimes about what's going on in GE and the programs that they have. They have things up in northern Vermont with computers. There's a space, a company that works on going up in space, you know, and they're working to work on more seventh and eighth graders to try to, because we have kids that are real hands-on kids. They're not the kids that are going to go.
Are you saying like by consolidating, we'd be able to offer more academic opportunities?
Yeah. So there's a whole thing about goal one, goal two, and goal three. So if we go back and, and really start making a dive into the strategic plan, you see things that are there that might help us. It says, under strategic initiatives, develop, pilot, implement alternative programs for students. So that would be to me, something that we could do.
Do you need help, Joe?
Thanks for giving me the minute to refresh my memory, too, because I was kind of picking up where we left off. I think what I was saying in the last meeting was really talking about if we are going to be talking about closure, and clearly there's a financial underpinning, that's obviously the kind, what the underpinning would be, that we would really want to have a process of investigating various criteria, right, for deciding. And things like improving academic outcomes would certainly be a criteria. I, I agree with you, right, for sure. But when I'm talking about, like, and that'll probably help get it at a why, what are the gaps? But I think we want a data-driven why. So I think we need a process for like outlining what information we need to help guide a decision, collect that information, and have conversations about it. So for me, step one is identifying the information we need, right, criteria for, for thinking about.
I think we need to hire a consultant because I don't think that we're qualified to, to make decisions on.
Well, so the, then before, I mean, yeah, the other thing that I think that I mentioned last time, too, that's on the, it's on top of my mind, because I hear all the things that are happening at the state, is kind of a question about timing, right? I mean, and, and I, I had a question about the, I was looking at H, sorry, let me, yeah, let me bring up. There was a education transformation timeline. It was kind of, I don't know if you can see this, but it looks like that in the, yeah. That is really small, actually going to blow that up right there. And it kind of took the, the main dates from H four fifty-four and mapped, just mapped them out on this timeline. One of the things it says is, school closure may require designation under July one, 2025. And I, I, I didn't read all of H four fifty-four. I skimmed some big sections of it, especially the ones that had to do with school size and, and things like that. And I didn't see anything. Those, those words were unfamiliar. So Chris, I don't, not to put you on the spot, but I, but I don't know. So, because, because this is another, so in all of this process that's happening at the state, they are talking about district boundary lines, they're talking about school size and class size. And I'm just kind of curious how our conversations overlap in, can we just take care that they overlap in productive ways, right, with that? And we, and, and there's a lot of unknowns with that as well, right? So, so those were the two. I think last time, we talked about this last month, those were kind of my two things that I was thinking about related, related to this, yeah. And I don't, not to put you on the spot with that, but they, those, those words, I just, I just didn't know where they were, those were coming from, but it felt related to our conversation. So that's why I was bringing it up.
I have a question. From Proctor, West Rutland and Opulnly, how many kids per school attend Stafford? Do we know?
Let me see if I have that.
I'm just curious.
So Stafford, we have 21 Opulnly High School students currently attend, five Proctor, and then 17 West Rutland.
Nice. Thank you.
Yep.
And one of the things I learned in Stafford, too, is that by the time the, the kids as a sophomore think about coming into Stafford, or if their grades are not, they don't, they're thinking to move kids backwards to get more, to have kids learn more about it in the middle school. And the things that, that I know the governor also spoke about that in terms of technical, that we're, we're low on people that want to, say, go into car repair, plumbing, electrical, computer programming. So that trying to figure out, is there a way to, to look at it for our district? Is that something, is that something even, you know, and then when I started rereading the strategic plan again, because I, I try to go back to that as much as possible, because that's student-related. I know there's money involved. I get that. You know, I, I understand Vermont's problems as best as I can. But I think if we just keep saying that we're going to, we're going to look at it from the lens of the student and, and I like the one about the alternative programs. You know, we're, we're doing a lot, I think, to get kids into college. We're doing well on the, you know, I read the VITCAPs and I like it. I like what I see. I can read it. I can understand it. And I, I'm glad we're doing that kind of thing. But we're, because we also need kids that are, if they are going to do alternative, they have to read a plumbing manual. They're going to read an electrical, you know, I mean, reading is going to be, and they have to do math and science is also helpful, too. But I think we could do better at helping kids get into different kinds of programs. And can we get them ready sooner, you know, than what we're doing right now? So that was just my thing, to look at it from the perspective, a process of looking at it from what we've already written with the strategic plan.
Absolutely be a factor that comes into play. My, my understanding of why this conversation opened in the first place, although I know there's history to it from even before I was on the board, was a financial one. So I just want to make sure that we're not saying that we feel, I mean, we're talking about academic performance and that's not the driver of this conversation necessarily, right? Just to clarify that this has been on the table because there's been a sense that the, the budget situation has been challenging and will be challenging in the future.
It's going to challenge.
Just asking for clarification.
That's part of it. But if you get rid of a building, you also add a whole bunch of new kids into a building. You can offer all kinds of new stuff. Class sizes go away. There's all kinds of stuff you can offer.
In the H, H four fifty-four calls for minimum school building sizes of 450, which we don't even have a building that could fit that many people, I don't think. So this is a little bit, too, why I'm curious about how this sits with these bigger picture things because they're calling, right, we can, we could, we could either do it ourselves or we could hire a consultant, although from my perspective, putting money into that before we have an understanding of what some of these other levers that are happening that are outside of our control doesn't, might, might, might not be the way that I would move forward. But, but that's what, so, because there are these numbers now that are being batted around there, too. And I don't know, I don't want to either help or hurt. I don't know if we'd be helping or hurting our situation even, right? So it's not coming from a particular perspective. But if we were, so anyway, those are just, yeah. So I'm, I'm, I'm wondering about how those things move together. And I get that, but I think solution, and, and I love this, I, you know, career, career education is super important, but I think a, a process of collecting data and understanding where we at, where we're at and what our opportunity spaces are, right? If, if, right, are, would be a part of a process that we, you know, that we don't, we don't know what the outcome is yet because we have an identity. is yet, because we haven't identified, clearly keeping academic, you know, and student success is going to be the driver for any decisions that we should be making, but, you know, there's other data that would need to go into that. Where would, where would kids go? Would we need to build a new building? Could we fit kids from one school into another school? Right, so there's just this whole bunch of data that we would need to collect to really understand a decision that we would make, right? And then what the best decision would be.
Right.
Need to assess each building.
And you're talking about moving kids, you know, which is always hard for a community because their, you know, their schools are their, we know that, are their centers, and, you know, it's just, I was looking at all the things about adaptability, you know, talk about trying to decide, you know, say, we were really blowing it up and saying, oh, we want a seventh, we want all our seventh and eighth graders, or all our middle school kids together in a building, because that would really be one, you know, I, my favorite kids have always been middle school. I love them. I mean, I love all kids, but, and I love the elementary and I love the high school, but I have always loved, because they're the ones where their brains are just going constantly, and, you know, I've always thought it would be great to have some kind of a place where you could do all kinds of things with sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, I mean, blow it up. But you're right, I don't know, could West Rutland hold four hundred and fifty-four kids of high school kids? That's a good question. I don't know what their biggest capacity, what if we had to move the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade out? Would it be four hundred and fifty-four then? You know, those are the kinds of things of, that is really hard to have the discussions about, but if we were looking at, I mean, Lisa's mentioned campuses, well, that would be, you know, then we're not talking about taking a building away, but how, I just thought if we go back to this, to the kids, what's in the best, if we do end up doing that, that's, and you said, offer more courses for kids to, to real, for whatever.
Yeah.
Okay? And, you know, there are statistics out there in Vermont that say we are low on the kids, on people who are not going to college, you know, what, how can we help them so that they're not just going into, I know we need McDonald's, and I know we need all those other kinds of things, but to offer them that there are more, how do you open them up so to see that there's so much more out there? And it's just in Vermont. I mean, I'm blown away sometimes by the amount of things that are in Vermont, for, you know, you might have to move to Burlington to get into that space thing that they're doing, but hey, you're still in Vermont, you know, so I just think if we could.
Yeah, we're on the same page with, absolutely, right, with hopes and dreams, and I think it's a conversation about how we get there. I started to do some noodling around, I'm not an expert in educational evaluation, although my doctorate is in education and I have a little bit of background, but definitely not in this, but categories include a financial assessment, right? Detailed cost analysis of operating of each school, projected savings from potential school closures, transportation cost implications of consolidation, capital improvement needs for each building over five to ten years, potential impact on district bond ratings or financing options, which doesn't, I don't know how that fits, but analysis of state funding implications, potential changes, that's just the finance category, the other categories look at educational impact, right? So that's a lot of what you were talking about, right? Academic performance metrics across schools, special program offerings unique to each location, class size impacts of consolidation, teacher to student ratios, we have Corey Valley teachers, right? What happens when you lose a building? Where do those teachers go? What does that mean, right? And then facilities evaluation, building condition assessments, ADA compliance status, energy efficiency ratings, technology infrastructure, blah, 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 community context, geographic accessibility of each school, economic impact of closure on each community, historical significance of school buildings, current community use of facility beyond school hours, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So that's the, that's the space of data collection that would help give like a pretty.
Could you send that to everybody?
Solid, well, it's an example, right? Because I don't know that this is.
No, but that's a good start to look at as, just to send something like that out. Here's the, here's what I found is a big picture.
And again, I wouldn't feel comfortable saying like, this is the thing we should be doing, because it's not my, you know, it was, it was the beginnings of an exploration.
But it could be used as a starter discussion.
But I mean, maybe you also raised hiring a consultant.
I have reasons why it's hard to close a school.
Right.
I forgot my other paper that had some of those things.
And that's the type of thing that would slot into fact-finding. This is, this is fact-finding, where we would collect all the information, speaking to, you know, pros and cons and everything for each of these different categories. So that's the, that's when I was, what I said last month, I think, about like criteria develop, this is, this is what I meant by that, is really, is really what, what do we need to know in order?
Could you send that to everybody?
If that's.
Or if you, if nobody else wants it, I would like it.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
I would love it.
And if that's what people are interested in.
Yes, I am.
But I don't, I mean, I also don't want to nail us, I mean, Eric put it, you had a different proposal on the table too, which was hiring someone who knows what they're doing, you know, more so as well. So I don't want to close down the possibility space, I just wanted to share, because we've been talking a little bit in generalities, and I just wanted to share some specifics about the types of things that we.
Well, this is an ongoing discussion. I mean, this is something we're going to discuss next month and June, and, you know, we're going to continue discussing it.
And again, I think the state stuff is going to directly impact all of this.
The state may beat us to the, to, you know, to the bottom of the race.
Right. But if we had an idea and we brought it, and we were in favor of it, who knows, we might be able to bring it to somebody to say, we've met this criteria, this criteria, this criteria, is that what you're talking about, or?
Said pretty much, we've heard it at the VSBA, if you want to stay relevant, you want to show that your scores are improving, that everything's going to be tied to that proficiency. So my only hesitation in hiring a consultant is I am troubled a little bit knowing what the surplus is to expend funds on that, knowing what the AOE, what the VSBA is spending on consultants just to deal with what they're dealing in, Montpelier, and we're starting, you know, miles behind them, are we spending money for not? Because no matter what we do, their decision is going to supersede anything.
In 2029, the decision will be made for us.
Well, they're going to, they lay boundaries in, sorry, what was that again? It's December, it's this coming, so, in less than a year at this point.
And then they could change governance and administrative stuff quickly.
I mean, what if they draw boundaries? I don't know if that's a possibility, but what, are they going to draw boundaries through? I know I read that they're, we're practicable, we will not draw boundaries through existing districts, but there's no guarantees, I imagine, that that's even, that that's going to happen.
Which map, which map are you referring to?
Poor you guys, I haven't gotten.
And there's a hundred waivers or exemptions for any question you ask too.
Right. They said about, specifically about that, they said about the boundaries, that there would be, immediately they went into waivers, and then they went to another thing, and immediately they went into waivers.
There wasn't a lot of detail about that stuff in the documents that I read, so I was curious, oh, so, it's not fleshed out really, it's not.
No, it is not.
Last night when they talked us through it, they talked it through a little more in-depth at the VSBA, so, and I guess that would be my hesitation. I mean, the VSBA has two people that they're using to speak up there. The AOE has hired someone who's basically written one, so it's just, we could be into a lot of money, and, I mean, I don't know, I just hate to see us dig a, I think it still warrants talking to. I think the other part about CTE also is a good conversation point at Stafford. A lot of places outside of Vermont, you're allowed to start at a VOTAC school earlier than you are in the state of Vermont, and I'm not sure the reason why it is the way it is in the state of Vermont, but that seems to be a question or conversation that should be taking place there. And I know they have those little trailers that I thought they were taking you around to.
They don't do that anymore. I asked that the last time we had the breakfast with them, and they said their enrollment is, that was like in a publicity, you know, thing to get, they have the numbers, they don't need it.
Capacity issue, right, for taking, they have more students that want it.
Yeah, their enrollment is fine, they don't need to have recruitment efforts like that. They also said that there are some regulations on them, that they can only, you can only be in a program for two years, so that's why you can't.
With Stafford.
Yeah, and that's why they rolled out this new sophomore program, where sophomores can go in and do any of the programs there, but they have to do all of the programs there. So it's like an exploratory model, they had to do away with their third-year leadership program, and so they're, they're trying to adjust to some of that too.
Yeah.
I mean, I think, you know, anecdotally, we just find that underclassmen, ninth and tenth graders just aren't mature enough to handle the level of responsibility with tools, with, yeah, being in the woods with chainsaws, like, my daughter will be in ninth grade next year, and absolutely not would I ever give her a chainsaw, maybe pie, never, but anyways.
Millens flying across the classroom, that kind of thing would be bad.
But they did, we did get an email from them saying that if you didn't get into your program, they're opening up boundaries so like people can go to the Hannaford Center. How transportation would work, that's troubling, but, you know, that is a possibility there.
And I think that's what the conversation was too about, from, you know, way back when, when the governor was talking about this, was we need more, not less, you know, so I, I'm thinking, gosh, wouldn't it be nice if we did something and started the kids earlier to get in, to start talking about those kinds of things, but that means hiring teachers that know that kind of.
Having spaces to have shop and.
And have a shop, yes.
We used to have a shop down here.
Yeah.
We did too.
Now it's the workroom, workout room.
Ours too.
So I know going to buildings and finances is important, but I'd like to keep going through to the, this, because a lot of work went into this, and we had parents involved and all kinds of faculty and Chris.
It's a good thing to keep on every agenda, to have a conversation, I think, the way things are moving, that every month it's going to bring something else to the top that may change the previous, so I would hope that it would just be a constant on the agenda.
I think also we need to keep in mind perspective, because early 2000s, Stafford was come on in, and our daughter won as a senior in electrical and plumbing, and then they started offering college credits, and a lot of the kids said, no, I'm not smart enough to go to college, therefore I can't go to Stafford. And now they're pushing trades, so I think we're getting more kids involved. So I think now is the time to strike with a hot iron.
Because kids need trades, and all kids are college kids.
And they're coming out with industry accreditations, especially in plumbing, electrical, welding, they're coming out, while my own son, who's an engineer now, mechanical engineer, walked out, he's an ASC certified car mechanic, and that was directly out of Stafford, so.
It'd be nice to have kids come out with Journey Person's Machinist level licenses.
Some programs have that depending upon the need. My cousin did a machinist program, but there is also industry that Cummins Diesel Plant was right down the road, so they were self, you know.
GE offers the apprentice program, yeah.
Get these kids to come and speak, to sophomores, juniors, and seniors.
More than once too, because the thing of it is, is that the first time you hear it, I mean, I sat in when Chrissy Gloss got GE to come into her math class, and they, you know, some were doing this, yeah, I'm listening, but you know what, I'm also getting a text from my girlfriend, and so, you know, she walks around and taps and stuff. But if you do it again, the first time you hear it, you only hear every fourth word, I think the research said, you know, so you're not getting the full thing. So if you get, they come, and the kids that are really with you will stay with you, but then the second time around, you know, have them come in six months again, and do the same presentation to, and see what more, because I think repetitiveness sometimes helps. Why don't you leave your phone, you know, that kind of thing, but it was a very well-done, they brought kids, one woman who went into GE into the apprentice program became part of HR, and she was going, they were paying her to go to school for HR, because she was going to become part of their HR program. So it led to other things that had nothing to do with machinists, you know, and I, you know, that was nice to see, so.
Okay, so I think like we should, we should talk about this again, the next meeting.
And would you send that to me? If you don't send it to, I would love to get that piece, or where it is.
To know just from the CTE standpoint, what the population of Stafford is, how many students don't get in, and how many programs are at capacity.
Hey, Mike, have you gone to your first meeting? To Stafford?
No, it's next, it's next on May.
Okay, maybe you could ask to get some of that.
I think every chapter was, and have that for the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, perfect.
Jenny or Jen, you have another meeting before next meeting?
I don't think we have another.
So one of us can reach out to Melissa and easily get that information to have for the board.
Okay, that's a good thing. Can I take, can we take a two-minute break so I can go to the bathroom?
There's one in the office, that's all I know.
Office and down at the other end of the school, but.
What is that?
All the way down, and you go down and take a left, walk down the hall, and then take a right.
Ten place.
It's the middle, it's a middle-level bathroom.
I'm just going to keep, well, just mute, because I'm going to stay recording during this recess.
Contract recommendations.
All right, we're on to personnel. Do I have a motion to accept the contract recommendations and retirement resignations?
So moved.
Okay, on the table, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? So moved. Onto policies. A E seventeen, behavioral threat assessment team, second read. B H four, distribution of non-school sponsored literature in schools, second read. Do I have a motion to accept the second read?
I'll make the motion if I'm allowed to. I worked on them, but, sure, yes, I'll make the motion.
Okay, motions are made, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Closed?
No.
So moved.
I voted no at the GRC issue, I'm consistent. Very good. I spent the vibe.
All right, future meeting day is May eighth, 2025, and for future agendas, I do have an announcement for Christine, if you could get to her forty-eight hours before our next meeting, so she has time to print off the documents, because sometimes she, someone's out of the office, she's picking up extra work.
Question, where is that meeting?
All right, we were rotating.
Yep, do you want to host?
You weren't there last time, so we were rotating, that's why, well, you know, that's why we're here, right? So we're rotating.
May eighth, I would not be able to, because we have AOE conference and being housed at my school.
Okay, what's your calendar look like?
Based on the large audience we had tonight.
Right.
Yes, we can host, I'll just say we're a mile down the road from Central Office too.
Or we could just go to Central Office next month, how about that? Much better.
If we know there'll be a large crowd, we can always be able to.
Central Office it is.
We could host, the ones that were here, we could host at Central Office.
Okay, so, so again, if you could give Christine a forty-eight hour notice for packets, if you want, that'd be nice.
Can I just say something at this point? I would really love for the admin to bring something back to you about how taking no gate fees would impact their schools for consideration again.
Sure.
I just want to make sure that we're not making this decision in haste.
Absolutely.
And I would really just appreciate that opportunity.
Absolutely, please, please do.
We should always have that opportunity to rethink something and talk about it, always, always.
Okay, and there's no other general.
I just want to clarify Christine's, because, so most of you already, it's a long statement, just say every meeting I need a packet, it really is just the last minute requests that, you know, that come in like, you know, last minute. Hey, it's, you know, it's two o'clock, can I get a packet for tonight?
Okay.
That's really what she says, just really within forty-eight hours. She does understand, you know, there are emergencies, but, but when she's getting six or seven different requests to run copies, it just becomes, like today was, right, so that's all, she'll be more happy to run anything off if.
Would it be easier if we could say, we always want one?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so I'll send her a message tomorrow.
Yes, if you say just, we'll just always have it back.
I always want one.
Do you always want one?
I put my request in.
Yeah, that's the easiest thing to do.
Anybody that doesn't, we can say the full board wants them.
I don't, I don't. I'll send her a message.
Okay. So could I get a motion to adjourn?
I gave you that motion.
I got some questions. Probably gonna go into executive session.
For what? Future agenda.
The quick ones?
They ask them for a reason.
Okay. But we have to say what reason.
What's?
Under the.
You can just.
Personnel.
Personnel, okay.
Should list who the personnel is.
Okay, so.
That's what I'm gonna do.
I need a motion to go into, to executive session.
I rescind the motion to adjourn and I say we should go into executive session. Thank you.
Do you not have to state personnel or budget?
He said personnel.
Oh, I'm sorry, didn't hear that, thank you.
Okay, Mike, I will send you a link.